All right, everyone. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order for USD 348 Board of Education. Please join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. I move -- we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss our settlement with our teaching staff for -- according to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at 6:36.
Second.
I've moved, and Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Executive session. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the non-elected personnel exception under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception for non-elected personnel under COMA, and the open meeting will resume at six -- 35, 45 -- 6:50.
Second.
Phil has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss personnel matters for the exception under COMA for school security matters to ensure the security of the school, its buildings, and/or its systems is not jeopardized. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. What time is it? Oh, an open meeting will resume at seven. It's going to be really -- The meeting back to order. Sorry, I jumped ahead in my excitement to do the pledge of allegiance. May I have an approval of the agenda?
No move.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye. Raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Okay, organizational items, parent, family, and community engagement opportunities. Do we have any, anything coming up with that that anybody would like to share or shout out? There is a blood drive at the high school on Wednesday from noon to six. I know about that. Summer school is off and running, and I know there's many activities downtown for kids to do that have been coming through district emails, so there's a lot going on. Does anybody else have anything they want to share? Okay. Several announcements. First of all, I'd like to welcome the Dorothy family. We have many guests here tonight, and we are very happy to have you all here. Welcome to all of our guests this evening as we conduct our business. We had, we're gonna be doing a special recognition here in a little bit, but in the announcement sections, we have some, we have some shout-outs. Since I'm already talking about Mr. Dorothy, we've had several, you know, retirement acknowledgements and all of those good things, but he also, and I hope I don't miss them, I'm sure there's several awards that he has won, but there was one in particular I wanted to make sure and share with the community, and that was the Douglas County Engage Award. That's a special award that's presented to people who are making a difference specifically in the area of mental health. And so, a young person is selected for that award, an adult professional is selected for that award, and then they select an institution or an organization. And for the adult, for the county, Superintendent Dorothy won that award. And so, I really wanted to make sure and include that, because he would never bring it up, obviously, but what Mr. Dorothy has done to advance our mental health outreach in our district has been very significant. We have social workers in buildings that we once did not have. We have programs in place in a very, and he's led that in a very balanced way, and he's been an advocate for that. And so, I did want to make sure that everybody knew that he was selected for that. And so, congratulations on that. Some other shout-outs. Told you about the blood drive. Oh, I was supposed, I should've done this in May, and I, I was a zombie in May, so I forgot, but, and these ladies would not like that I'm bringing it up, but I did want to give a shout-out to our Safe Night After Prom Committee, which was chaired by Casey Frost, Kim Harvey, and Stacy Newfeld. Those ladies were not aware of their involvement in that until late January. There was another crew that was gonna do it, didn't work out. They found out they were gonna be in charge of it, had no money as of February, and by late April, had gotten thousands of dollars in donations and put on the first full after prom that the juniors and seniors have been able to have in two years. I didn't want to do a certificate because they wouldn't accept it, and they won't like that I'm even mentioning it, but it, that's usually something, if you've been on Booster Club, that's usually a year-long project. They did it in like three months, and so, I wanted to make sure and say thank you for that.
Were you part of that too, though?
Well, that doesn't-
Exactly.
Well, okay.
Just saying.
But, but they, they really stepped up and just, and took it in a very short turnaround time, so I want, I wanted to thank them for that. We also received our letter of determin-, our IDEA, that's the Individuals for Disabilities Education Act. We received our letter of determination on that, which is a big deal. Chris and Susan can, or Chris can speak more about that maybe when we get to our co-op part. And Sheila Vanderwig has just been like racking up awards. I think that you're doing, no, I don't see. There was a little bit of back and forth about whether that recognition would happen tonight or not. It's not, but I can still talk about it. She received the Ivadine Cook Educator of the Year Award, which is a huge deal and is wonderful for, for our inter-local and also for our school district. So, many really neat things going on that deserve to be recognized and thanked, even if it's not in the form of a formal recognition. Last but not least, I'm gonna say that it's Chris Perry's 40th birthday. Again, he'll appreciate me bringing that up.
Thank you very much.
Yes. You know, all of them probably have target practice with my face at home, just like, for multiple reasons. And Dr. Ealing-Gwen, this would've been her last board meeting tonight. She is our retiring primary center principal. She really wanted to be here. She was not able to be here, and so, she sent me an email shortly before the meeting started, and she asked me to read it, so I wanted to respect her wishes and read this on behalf of Dr. Ealing-Gwen. It reads, "I want to thank Mr. Dorothy and the board for allowing me to serve in USD 348 for the past 40 years. There have been many changes, and things are much different now than they were way back then. The board has truly substantive discussions now, and over the last several years, has truly made an effort to keep everyone safe. That is greatly appreciated. Families of VES and VESPCE, thank you for trusting your kids to us. Working with the students, staff, and community has been a joy. Thank you. Deb Ealing-Gwen, retired Baldwin Primary Center Principal." So, thank you, Deb, for sending that, and we wish you all the best in her retirement. All right. With that, we can go ahead and proceed through our agenda unless anyone else has something they would like to add. Okay. And for new people, just so you know, if you ever have principals, if you have announcements or anything you just want to share off the cuff, this is absolutely a time to just, to just do that in the future. Consent agenda. May I have a motion for approval?
No move.
Phil has moved, and Tony has seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. All right. Now, we're on to the recognition part. Normally, we hand out certificates, and then we end that time with our educational program highlight. Tonight, our educational program highlight is the recognition of Mr. Dorothy. We have a little something that we would like you to watch. Something has been made for you. This is, and it's something, it's all in-house. This is what's so beautiful about it. This comes from our journalism department. This was spearheaded by Melin Harris, VHS student, and it was supervised by Mr. Kit Harris, and this is a thank-you video from us to you.
For the last 16 years here at USD 348 in Baldwin City, our districts had the privilege of having Mr. Paul Dorothy as our superintendent, our community and our school district, and that everybody here appreciate him very much. And our broadcast media class put together a little video to thank him for his services to our district.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy. Thank you, Mr. Dorothy.
Hi, my name is Deb Ealing-Gwen. I'm principal at the primary center. And a couple of things about Mr. Dorothy. He has always been so supportive of early childhood education and the importance of providing for our littlest people here. Thanks, Mr. Dorothy.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy, for your time and dedication to our community. You will be very missed.
I just want to thank Mr. Dorothy for being a wonderful superintendent, for always listening to us, taking our concerns into consideration, and just supporting us. Have a great retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy, for all your hard work and everything you've done for the district. We all appreciate you, and we will miss you dearly. I hope you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy, for all you've done for us.
He is a wonderful superintendent. We're all gonna miss him so very much. He's someone that always had an open-door policy. I, you felt like if you ever had a problem or just needed to talk to someone about something, his door was always open. I wish him nothing but the best, him and his lovely wife. I, I know they're getting a new swimming pool, and so, I'm sure he's gonna be spending a lot of time in that. So, good luck, Mr. Dorothy, and I, I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy.
Congratulations, Mr. Dorothy. I just want to say thank you so much for all of your help here in the school districts since I've been here. You really are a phenomenal person and a phenomenal boss. You're a big part of what it means to be in Baldwin, is the spirit that you carry us with, just that gratitude and friendliness. There, there's so many words that come to mind, but gratitude is what I have when I, when I really think about all the hard work you've put into our school district. Thank you.
Mr. Dorothy, there's a lot of things we could thank you for and should thank you for, but number one on the list is the EOC report. You never failed us. It's raining like it is today. We know about it. The storm's coming, snow coming. You kept us on track. We thank you for that. You're on point every single day.
You're the only superintendent I've worked for. I don't know what I'm gonna do, so I'm sure you are gonna enjoy retirement and look back on it seeing us all work really hard, and know that you are going to be missed. Have a great rest of your life.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy.
Hi, Mr. Dorothy. Congratulations on your retirement. Thanks for everything you've done for the, the kids and the staff at USD 348, and I hope you enjoy your retirement and more time with your family and your grandkids.
Mr. Dorothy, thank you. You are part of the reason that I got this job. I appreciate the foundation that you laid for me to be able to come here and do what I do, work with these kids. It's a great community and a great group, and it's thanks to you.
Congratulations, Mr. Dorothy.
Thank you, Mr. Dorothy.
I'm gonna embarrass you some more. Would you mind coming up here along with your beautiful family? Would you guys all come up? Because this really is also a thank you and a recognition of all of you. All right. Yes, let's get the dre-, everybody wanna gather round? Okay. Well, I was talking to your, your beautiful daughter at your retirement reception, and I, I wanted to, I don't want to just like say exactly the same thing, but I do want to say it again, because it isn't just, when you do a job like what you do, it involves the entire family. It takes sacrifices on the part of the entire family. Sorry.
It's okay, I'm already there.
I've been so good. Like every time, it's like last me, I'm like, no, I'm not hugging you for, no, delaying all my feelings. But, but it really is. It's a commitment on, on everyone's part, because there's, I, I know how you are. You're such a hard worker. You've role modeled that, and even though you're with everyone, in the back of your mind, you're trying to solve the next problem because of how deeply you care about people. You've always been student-centered, that comes first, but all the things that come along with that, that's hard to just leaving set there. Even though it's healthy for us to do, it's easier said than done. But we want you to know that we appreciate that and that we recognize that as you leave this district better than you found it. Cindy, I want to give you some flowers. Hope they survive my hot car. And then, we have a plaque. This is from the board and the district that we wanted to present to you. "Mr. Paul Dorothy, in recognition of 16 years of service to Baldwin City USD 348. Never underestimate the difference you made and the lives you touched. USD 348 staff, students, and families." This is from us to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we also have two gift cards. I know that seems weird, but we found out there were limits. The, the gifts and the generosity of this district, there's a $500 limit on a gift card, and, and what was given exceeded that. There's like 800 bucks for you guys to have their best time at whatever national park you haven't seen yet, or ice cream. I think even, you know, I think, I think everybody should get some ice cream. So, you know, when we always say a recognition, "USD 348 supports and promotes excellence." So, for the last time, I'm going to say to you, "USD 348 supports and promotes excellence." A lot of that is because of you. We thank you. We congratulate you all, and we wish you the best on your retirement. And now, I'll give you a hug. High fives? Any high fivers? High fivers? Yeah? Thank you. Congratulations. Open up those five, too? Yeah. Do you guys want to get together for, and get a picture of you all together?
Without the purple podium, though, because like everyone I have just has this purple podium.
Maybe in the middle.
Where do you want us?
Um, they center in front of that. Yeah. I thought I got all of them, and then this little guy came up somewhere, and I don't know, I'm like, oh. Okay. Don't be afraid, we're all family. Can you give a big cheese? All right. Ready? One, two. I'm just gonna start snapping, and maybe we'll get a couple of things. Okay, I got a lot. I got a lot. I'll just go through them and make sure that all eyes are open, but, oh, yeah.
You have to take a lot of them.
I have like, you're gonna think there's too many, but I'm not kidding. Okay, we're good.
You don't, you don't have to hold anymore.
I'll send a ball to you.
All right. Congratulations and thank you for coming tonight. This is the last meeting, so the next part of our gift is to get through stuff quickly.
So, okay, I have to have my work, but, so, tonight, I was telling Phil that this is my 288th regular meeting. Of course, with special meetings, it's way over 300, but, and that counts the five-minute meetings still count, but, but, yeah, this is, it's, it's been a lot of meetings. 24 years in superintendent, you meet a lot of times, and it's been, I've appreciated the opportunity to be the superintendent here in Baldwin City. It's, it's meant a lot to me. Remember when Andy? When Andy was on the first board that decided to entrust me as leader of this district, I appreciate that, so, you know.
And he gives the best spouse tours. He, he led me around Baldwin. He introduced me to all kinds of neat things, so Andy was a great workman.
But most certainly, I've appreciated working with the board members that I've had in Baldwin. I appreciate you guys and the board that I've had that I finished with, and, and the people of Baldwin City. I know I kind of have a ton of you here, but I, I do appreciate the support I've gotten, and most certainly, we don't always agree on things. I, I know that, but I've always felt that even when we disagree, we still can work together and, and move forward. So, anyway, I've just appreciated the opportunity to work with the kids in Baldwin City for 16 years, so, thank you. Thank you, guys. Oh, let me introduce everybody here if I can remember. And this isn't even all of them. This is Dami Davis. She's my granddaughter, her mom. Landry is my old- Landry is my oldest granddaughter, oldest grandchild, Landry. Almost 11. Almost 11. Okay. Crew is my grandson, Brittany's son. Harrison is my oldest grandson, Michael's son. Kellen is my grandson, Michael's son. Brittany running around here, our little cute one here. She's Michael's daughter. And Mackenzie is Michael's daughter. And Rachel is Michael's wife. Appreciate Rachel. And of course, Michael, my son, and Brittany, my daughter. So, very much appreciate them. Appreciate you guys for supporting me all this time, especially sometimes when Grandpa came. Well, anyway, thank you, guys, for coming. I didn't know you guys. So, you made this work something, but, no, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you all for coming. That made it even more special.
I'll get myself a post.
I know, I thought of everything except for extra tissues.
Yeah.
And thanks again to Melin Harris for putting together such a beautiful video, so professional, and all the kids and staff who participated and made that happen. They've been working on that for a while, so.
I could tell.
Yes.
That didn't just happen last week.
That's right, yes. Very excited about it. All right. We'll move on because we must, right? Okay, celebrating 348 voices. I didn't receive any letters this month, so we'll move on to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? All right. Then we'll move on to our financial report, final bills and transfers.
Just a second.
Sure.
Hey, but you guys, don't have to hang on. You guys can go if you're ready.
The rest isn't nearly that fun.
Yeah, this isn't going to be very fun from this point forward, for you guys, it's great, so.
And we are not offended, so trust us. So, for our final bills and transfers, if you guys have that, had a chance to look Mr. Oler, anything you would like us to know under final bills and transfers?
No, just a team approval for that. Plus, I do want to add, as a cautionary, to add team approval for use of contingency fund if we need it. So, we have that, uh, ready, approved and ready to go. We shouldn't have to adjust any of this, so I do want to add that as well.
Do we have a capped amount, like an up-to amount, otherwise come back to the board again? Do you have like a ballpark?
We don't.
We're totally guessing. We just want to make sure we're there.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So, that's why we're just asking for an opportunity to use contingency.
Okay.
Is this documented in email or on board docs?
The, there was.
It wasn't in board docs.
There's nothing in board docs.
Okay, okay. Cindy, back to me.
So, for authorizing contingency, when we've done that in the past, which is not very often, I don't remember us doing that very often, but when we've had to, it seems like, and I don't want to complicate things, and I don't want to necessitate another meeting, but it seems like, and maybe I'm hallucinating, that we gave an up-to amount, like approval to use up to, you see what I'm saying? Like, yes, you can use contingency. If it exceeds this amount, let us know. You know what I'm saying?
Sure, sure.
I think it's just a good practice, not that we want to, we don't want to force a situation where you have to come back to us over 2,000. Is there a number that you would recommend that would definitely guarantee you get there? I mean, it's not going to be over 50.
So, let's do this. Let's do this. Let's say, let's, if the board would agree to 100,000, if it somehow meant that we needed to use more than 100,000, we could come back and have a special meeting, another meeting.
We don't want to give up.
For approval on that, if not to exceed an amount. I mean, I think Nate and I can work with an amount. I'm giving you.
I just think it's a good practice, just for, you understand what I'm saying?
No, I think the.
Not that it's not a lack of trust.
No, it's board oversight, and the board should have proper oversight and be able to bring that in if they feel they need to.
Well, and also communication before, if we do that.
Right.
Important communication there as well.
I move we approve the final bills and transfers as needed with approving contingency usage up to 100,000 if needed.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Capital outlay now, and that we do have attached. And so, just as a reminder, what we're approving is the line item just for '22, '23. The rest of it's all in draft form because we plan for things, and then sometimes they shift as needed.
Did you make the change on the van?
I didn't know.
Okay, that's fine. So, Nate and I.
Was this under transportation?
Well, you guys saw, I think, a message about what's happened to our van.
Yes.
Basically, we've contacted them, and they said, "We have no idea when they're ever going to make one." So, what we're considering is maybe canceling that PO and then carrying the money forward, which you can in capital outlay, carry the money forward and bring it into next year's. And then Chris is now working to see if there's another vehicle that maybe we could go after that might be similar and meet our needs, but more available to get. Because right now, they're making those for regular people buying them from the dealership, but they are not making them for any fleet, period, just because they're so short. So, it seems not wise to continue to wait, because once the year's done, we can't, we can't, it's, I can't, it's difficult to go back and try and bring it forward because it's specified. Right now, we can cancel it before the end of the year and then just have it carry over.
So, it's a kind of amount, so if you cancel it, we can now roll that over. And remember correctly, this van was purchased on some specialty pricing, like state.
Yes, the state bid, yeah. It was.
Will we try it back at that same avenue, or will we try it alternative route?
We're going to try it, well, it has, it'll have to be bid no matter what. It was 37, 33,700, I think. And that will have to be, if it's that amount, it'll have to be bid. If we can find a state bid that has a vehicle that we can get right now, we'll do that. Chris did get a message the other day that a dealership had 12 Suburbans that would probably fit in there, but we, price-wise, the Suburbans may, are probably more than 33,700. It depends on what we can get. You know, if you go buy a fully loaded Suburban, the school district can't buy a fully loaded Suburban, because the price is, but, they make Suburbans that have all the bells and whistles out of them. All the safety things are still in there, but they take all the bells for school districts, so it's just a, it's a, just a regular Suburban, and then the price is quite a bit less usually when we do that. So, that's what we're going looking, but right now, it doesn't make sense to keep waiting for a van that they say they're not making any for anybody. And we were told by either Craig Newanswander at KSDE that nobody was getting those, no school district was getting those across the state of Kansas, so.
So, time to move on as well.
Yes, that's what we're saying, is it's time to move on. Let's take it into next year, and let's try and find a different vehicle that we could get that would be useful to the district.
So, does the board need to take action, cancel that contract? Give them a.
No, we can cancel the PO. We most certainly should inform you that change, which we're doing now, and then most certainly before another purchase could be made of some kind, we have to come back. So, that capital outlay thing you see there tonight, if you go to transportation, you see the other vehicle, that's going to bump, 33,700. Okay.
So, we're looking for a motion as amended?
As amended would be the best, okay.
Well, I had a question.
Yes, Phil.
So, what's the support comment? Bleacher comment? There are two things I have to ask. But I want, you know, one of our things with the bond is we're spending a couple million dollars upgrading stuff. I hate to do a bunch of upgrades to something we already have, and then that's just going to get torn out. So, I wasn't sure what that just meant, like covers for like, when you're watching, so the sun's on your eyes, or that's just like covers to protect it when you're not using?
I.
Light changes, just basic covers.
But here.
It's over here.
Not at the football field.
Okay, not the football.
This was.
Baseball field. It just says important.
I'm not, I know. So, I'm saying that, and I'm going to say to you, I'm not absolutely sure.
Over here, they.
I think it's.
It's like awnings.
It's the awnings that go over the top of those, so everybody gets out of the sun, and also you don't have balls coming down on your head. I believe that's what that is, but I'm, Phil, I'm going to say.
I'm going to hold you to that next time.
I know, I know, next time, okay.
When we talked about tweaks, like a year and a half ago, I mean, it's such a blur, but when we talked about some tweaks, because that wasn't originally on the list a year and a half, like, we moved some things, or it was, it was a year later, and that was one of the things that the rec had communicated as a safety thing, so my memory is, without having that particular year's notebook, was that that was moved up a year, and then we switched something else. So, when we were talking about that, that is what we were talking about. But if this means something besides that, I wouldn't want to vote for that either.
Well, all I can say is Nate and I, we can verify that and let you know if we're wrong.
Okay.
And then, most certainly.
I'm happy with that.
And then you guys most certainly can come back and say, "Well, we want to amend that motion now." You always have that right.
Yeah. And then I, the other was, I know it's a project not currently scheduled, but the other was the soccer field license offense. You know, I want to see us spend 170,000 on license, and then in a year, the Phillies big new stadium, and now they're like, "Oh, is anybody want a license?"
Right.
I mean, that's not scheduled to, but that's just, I mean, I just want to be forward-thinking in what we're going to be doing with the facilities.
Oh, that's not.
Yeah. It's not scheduled, so it's not.
It's not scheduled. I think it's on there as just a reminder. It's a project that we've talked about before, didn't move forward.
Definitely needs to happen.
Yeah. Yeah. But you're right, if it gets, if it gets dealt with in a different manner, then there's no sense taking it from here. Okay.
Any other questions? So, would a motion as amended be the desired?
I think I have it.
You got it? Go for it.
I move we approve the capital outlay plan amended to carry over the vehicle funds as discussed.
Second.
Andy moved and Phil seconded to accept the capital outlay as presented along with the amendment for the transportation line item, carryover as needed. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move.
Administrative reports. McFarlane Aviation Educational Opportunities. Good evening and welcome.
Thanks for coming tonight. I'm Althea Hensley. I manage the Human Resources Department for McFarlane Aviation. I don't know how many of you know about McFarlane. I won't bore you with a lot of the details, but we've been around for over 50 years. David McFarlane is the founder of the company. He lives in Vinland, right there on the corner, right in front of the plant, our most closest employee to the office, so pretty nice. We have been growing for years now, but in 2015, we actually had about 56 employees. In 2020, we had about 95 employees, and today we have about 140. So, we've been growing rapidly. We manufacture for products, parts that supply the general aviation industry. So, we are FAA-approved, PMA-certified parts that go on people's planes. Not insignificant. We're pretty big in our industry. We do a lot of good work for pilots and companies that own general aviation equipment. We also sell to some of the big commercial companies, too. So, a really big industry sitting in Baldwin City. We, the machinist or trade industry, I guess, is really challenged these days to find employees, and we are working our butts off trying to find them, and there's just a shortage. And what we find is, we're not really educating, we're not getting youth into the trades. There isn't a lot of people coming up to take over the trade jobs that are available today, and they're not insignificant jobs. They pay well, they're secure jobs, there's jobs that people want, and make a good living, support families, and build in the community. So, I guess I'm challenged with, how do we do that? How do we get help and support and partner? McFarlane wants to help. We want to partner with interested people to try to build that interest in that education that we need for those trades that need to, need to be brought into the youth education. So, we've been talking to DeSoto. I'll be honest, we got a little interest in them early. We've been trying to contact Baldwin and haven't gotten a lot of interest, so I was concerned. We sit in Baldwin, we want to support our local schools, we're two minutes down the road. So, finally, we reached out to the board and said, "Hey, can we talk?" We've actually connected since with the principal of the high school. We've had a conversation, we've talked a little bit about education, about could we teach, could we do this? And we're open to any of those ideas, but we really need to do something in the trade field. And I'll tell you, one of the interesting things that we've found at DeSoto is, they've got a whole new facility, they've got a whole new building, but they're doing some education. They've got CNC machines, they've got mills, they have laves, they have manuals, they have, they're teaching the trade. They're bringing people in. We're offering to do whatever we can to help in those areas. We've got a large machine shop. We've probably got 40 people in our machine shop out of our 140. So, we have a very large facility, and we'd be willing to partner in all different kinds of ways. We've had some ideas, we've kicked around some ideas. We're just not quite sure how to make that entry and get some interest from somebody from the educational side of Baldwin. So, I'm reaching out, is what can we do? How can we, how can we partner? And as I said, we've got some ideas, I'm happy to share some of them that we've kicked around, but we're really, I guess, taking a step to say, what can we do? What, and can we get some support and excitement and educate the youth on opportunities that they really don't know about? So, yeah, that's, I think that kind of sums up.
Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Does anyone have questions or comments at this time?
Do you hire and train them, or do they come in with a certificate?
Both. We actually do both, and we're doing more of the training right now. We've actually starting, we've started a program recently where we're even retraining or upscale training some of the current employees that are certified. So, we're trying to bring them even up to another level. So, we're doing that now. But we've hired inexperienced, so we've hired people that don't know anything about machining, anything, and we've got other departments, too, that we could use trade labor in, but our machining is probably the biggest area. So, we've done both.
And what is the certification?
It's a, it's machinist certification, yeah, normally from vocational school, and I guess that's what we're interested in. There used to be vocational education. That's kind of gone by the wayside, and, you know.
Is there a pathway that DeSoto?
Is there a pathway that DeSoto, DeSoto, you know, articulate that more?
It's, we do not have a, we're talking about the aviation machinist pathway that is a novel path that we have in the, in the, or DeSoto. It's all in E D O R S, I don't know whether DeSoto has it.
They have a CTEC, is it CTEC, CTESS, their new, um, facility? Let me get you, the name is CTEC.
We can talk about the DeSoto facility.
The CTEC caps program?
They've got a new one yet.
Yeah, and they actually, they have different areas, but one of them is called the Emerging Technology Strand, which is their machine shop classes. And again, they've actually invested in equipment, mills and machines and things to train kids, or at least let them take it as a shop class or an extra, uh, educational path for them, uh, to even get some interest built in, in the trade.
Well, I think this is very exciting, and I also think it's a great opportunity to have shared awareness, because I agree with you, I think there are citizens of Baldwin City that, I don't, I don't know how, that are not as aware of, I mean, it's amazing, and the fact that your company has grown through a pandemic is, I mean, that just doesn't happen every day. But on the flip side, I mean, we, in our pathway program, uh, Mr., in fact, we've recognized a bunch of our, uh, award-winning welders just last month at the board meeting. So I think there's gonna be benefit with working at the building level so that we have awareness on both sides, because we do have VOTEC classes. One of my challenges, I remember in FFA growing up, was people coming onsite versus going off. And, you know, if you were under eighteen, there's other things to work out. And then also, all the, the programs that you have to create, you still have to make sure that you're fulfilling accreditation with the state. So, you know, there are things that you have to work out. So I don't, you know, I certainly have never, unless a board member here, here differently, we have those programs, I think we could make them better. But I would like to push back a little bit on lack of interest, or, um, I think we just need to be more effective. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. And I, I wasn't, I was, I was not accusing anyone at all.
No, I know, but I kinda saw the email about nobody was responding, and, and I went back, 'cause I take that stuff very seriously, and I went back and researched. Um, you know, Mr. Harmon was getting that email, awesome man, teaches our classes and that, very knowledgeable. I think that was, um, he didn't know about it until like May. So I don't want you guys to have the impression that there is like a lack of enthusiasm or excitement, because why would we not try to partner in every possible way we can? There's so many opportunities that are win-win for you and our students and trade jobs. Like, that is, every bit is important, and we, and I know there's been a concerted effort at the high school on academic counseling to make sure we're exploring all of those, but there are always ways we can do better. And if we have a strategic partnership that is working more effectively, that can do nothing but good things for kids and our community. So I'm super excited about that, I really, really am.
We are too, we'd like to, to get some, some traction, you know?
That's, that's awesome. So you've talked with Mr. Brittingham, I'm aware he came out and toured the facility.
Yeah, he did, and I'd like to invite all you guys, if, if we wanna set up a tour, I'm happy to do that, uh, for you guys to see the site and see what we do and, and the kinda jobs that we have. We've, we've got summer kids working now. And the eighteen thing, I think there's been a recent law passed. I think we can actually go younger now, I think it's more like seventeen.
I'm old, so like, when back when that was my thing, and I was like doing part-time welding, if you can imagine, um, there was, there was some, there were a lot of limitations. And so we had to have certain mig welders onsite. Our community supported that, you know, and that was part of, you know, just how I grew up. But I know that sometimes those things are like, yeah, let's do it, but there's certain boxes you have to check, make sure we're doing everything, you know, the way we're supposed to do them, so it sounds like there's...
And I think we're, I think we've, we probably just need to expand some more on the welding there. It's pretty narrow, but there's a whole manufacturing curriculum, we went and talked through some of it. But I think we could do some things there if, if we get support to do that, and if it's a, a good partnership. But I think there's so many opportunities in, in the local area. So we wanted to reach out and kinda share our interest and hopefully gain some interest.
Absolutely.
Definitely, thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah.
This is good information, we need to just sometimes go, like, really explore things before we put on breaks.
Right, right.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for this part of the conversation?
Just to express my appreciation for you bringing it up, and, and wanting to show this number is that you are, you say a hundred and fifty-five employees currently, and you're, you're gonna be outpacing the school district pretty soon, employees are fourteen long, but, but, but just honestly clarify too, I mentioned this as well, but, uh, this is a government entity, the wheels of government do move slow, not necessarily by design, but oftentimes adding additional pathways for our kids takes upwards of a year to kinda work out the logistics of that, and get the courses added, get the staff to teach those courses, so, so if it seems slow to any future partnerships or this one here, it's not intentional by these, just sort of the, the, the way these things operate sometimes. So we'll continue these conversations, hopefully look forward to work on this.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We appreciate you coming. Awesome, okay. Uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four district calendar. Um, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look that over. Again, that would not be for next year's, twenty-two, twenty-three, that's a whole other year after that. Um, Mr. Dord, do you have some comments?
Let me give you a couple of comments about it. Generally, each year, what we do is, is we have a group that puts together the calendar, uh, usually kind of tries to set similar dates for that. You'll notice that this calendar is different than calendars we've had for a while. Uh, years ago, we used to start the school year with a half-day. Uh, at the elementarys, a couple, two half-days, and then we'd have a full day, uh, after that. And then sixth and ninth graders started on a different day. And, so anyway, the difference you'll see here is that the teachers suggested maybe doing a half-day the first day, where we've had a whole day for a while, uh, and then having a full day on the last day. Okay, I, I will tell you that the teaching staff is not altogether on that suggestion. There are some of them that want to have the full day in the first day and a half-day on the last day. And maybe on our last day this year, a lot of teachers maybe changed their mind on it, and they were ready to go with a half-day. So what, what I would say, say is, I've brought to you what might brought to me. Uh, but I, I would say, since this is a year away, you've got next year's calendar as approved. There are some parents and staff that are gonna wanna know this fairly soon, what the, what the one is a year away. But I think there needs to be some more discussion between administration and, um, and, and the teachers on, on this. So I'm just asking you to look at it. If you have a strong opinion that you wanna approve that tonight, or the board wants to do that, I understand that, but at the same time, I think there's a couple of issues there that still need to be worked out, um, and need to be talked about with, with, um, them on what that would be. So, um, my, my advice is to not approve it tonight and, and let it go, and, and, and let Mark have a chance to visit with Mike and some representatives about whether they wanna keep the half-day at the beginning and at the end. 'Cause I, I, that is a, a challenge, and we moved away from that. I will, I will tell you this, lots of elementary teachers would like half-day at the beginning. And I don't, I'm not sure they love the, the full day at the end. I think what the, the number one would be, let's have a half-day at the beginning and a half-day at the end. But that doesn't work for contracts, so, um, they, uh, but anyway, elementary would probably prefer the way you have it presented. Secondary would probably reverse that, and they would rather have the half-day at the end. But that's, that's just kind of, it's just a discussion that needs to be happening a little more.
Well, I have no problem with waiting on that. Does anybody object to waiting and letting them have time to hash that out?
And when it comes back to us, I would just like to understand or have kind of a synopsis, whatever the recommendation is, um, once Mr. Dodge and, and team have a chance to revisit it, just what the educational, you know, reasoning is one way or the other, of what, what the educational rationale is, or, you know, and there may be other considerations too, which I totally understand. And I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to doing things differently. We don't have to do things the same way just 'cause that's all how we've always done it. But if we are gonna make a change, we need to be clear on why we're doing it and what objective that means. So if everybody's cool with waiting, all right.
Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three handbook review.
Uh, we, we have, um, several of those tonight. Uh, the high school, I know Brandt, I think, sent you a message about why he would prefer to wait on the handbook, to wait another month, uh, and have that in July. Uh, so if board members have questions on that or questions about the handbooks that have been presented to you, uh, now's your time to do that. You can approve any handbook you're ready to approve tonight, if you want to. But I, I, I think that Mr. Brittingham had good reason why he wanted to wait. Uh, he had some discussion with the new assistant principal that he felt like needed to happen.
The only thing I noticed in that, when I was over, was the, this is the PC version. Yeah, PC version has lunches still being free, lunches and breakfast being free for next year. Which I, is that...
Which is not true.
Okay, so that...
That will need to change.
Revert back to the previous paid lunch, or I mean, whatever.
And, and we are still waiting, it's gonna be July, in July, before we find out exactly what that breaks down to. And in July, you're probably gonna get your meal pricing.
Okay. So, so I didn't see that chart in any other handbook, so it'd be worthwhile to remove that chart so that we can re-approve this PC pricing schedule.
Right, right, Nicole.
Okay.
Any other questions on the handbooks? If not, we could go ahead and do, um, noting that change of, of, um, of that section about lunch information to remove.
Something you just had.
Well, you're the one that said, I like to spread it out.
I move we accept the handbooks as presented, um, with the little amendment of, of striking the lunch portion for the primary center handbook. Chris has seconded, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Uh, curriculum review, um...
I think that might be curriculum approval.
Yes, yes, it is, it is, uh, we'll be up for approval because we went over that, um, last month, so... So we would accept a motion for that approval, which includes the visual arts, um, the Medal of Honor curriculum that Mr. Schneider talked with us about and Mr. Bland, um, and then the physical education, um, three, three for twelve. The visual arts is pre-K through twelve.
If only I knew how to say curriculum plural, I would do it.
Curricula.
Is it?
Curricula.
That's what I thought, that it could be just curriculum.
We won't judge.
Say curriculum. I move we have approved the curricula as presented.
No, I have to spell it.
Question mark.
Andy moved and Phil, uh, seconded, all those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. All right, moving on to old business, um, school security. Uh, I'll touch more on, on this, um, when we get to the bond exploration update, uh, portion. Um, but since our, our last meeting, obviously, you know, we had, um, a national tragedy again, and, you know, there are several emails, um, coming in. When things like this happen, um, it's, it's horrible, um, and it causes folks to reassess all sorts of things through, you know, a new lens or maybe a different lens. Um, you know, for the emails that I'm sure you all have received as well, asking questions such as, do you do this, do you do that? Um, I just kinda want to give, um, a blanket statement and then open it up to any board members who would like to add anything further or comment further. Um, but I do want to assure folks that all of the right conversations are being had by, by all of the people, you know, our administrators, our, our leadership teams take all of this very seriously. Um, um, have already spent a portion of this summer, you know, addressing that in the context of how we already do things, how we could do things differently, how that manifests in, in, in plans. Um, so I, I at least wanna offer that assurance that all, all the correct people are having the correct conversations. But, you know, like so many other social issues, the, all of these things do not begin and end at, at the school. Uh, the school, you know, is asked and called upon to be leaders in those responses, but it, but it takes all of us, you know, kinda watching out for one another. And, um, I'm glad that we live in the community in which we live, but, you know, it doesn't make us immune. And every, every place that this has happened, what they all have in common, as different as these communities or school populations are, is nobody thought it would happen there until it did. So we have to continue to be vigilant. Um, we are and we will. Um, so I, I at least wanted to speak to that in that way. Um, and also open it up if anybody else had things they would like to say or add.
Well, a couple of things, I think Mr. Dodge maybe had some comments on this, but, um, I, I did wanna point out, I know some of the concerns had to do with, is there any way to anonymously report, uh, school violence? Uh, for many years, there has been a state hotline run by the Kansas Highway Patrol that is, is called the School Violence Hotline. Uh, it's, can be completely anonymous for somebody to call in. They have contacts with all of our principals and myself, uh, and soon to be switched over to Mr. Dodge, um, so that a student, parent, someone can make a phone call and say, hey, I think there might be something coming up. They also take other things, like potential suicide, any of those kinds of things go through there. Um, we have been working this spring, it's in place, but we're not where we'd like to be with it. Kansas City Crime Stoppers, we're working with them, um, through, um, local police and through the Douglas County Crime Stoppers as a way the kids could, um, make an anonymous report through them. So I think by next year, they'll have two different ways that they can do that. Um, um, so there, it, it's out there. Obviously, when people are asking, it must not be getting advertised as much as it should, uh, because they're asking and saying, why, you know, why do we not have something like that? So, uh, there has to be more communication that it's there and what it is. And I know that each of the buildings has, have signs, uh, with the numbers on it, so, uh, it's there. That doesn't always mean that people get that. So, uh, obviously, it needs to be communicated more than what we've been doing, so, um... But with that, I know Mr. Dodge, uh, had a conversation with his administrative team in early June here. And so, Mark, any comments you wanted to make?
Um, yes, um, when we met on the sixth and seventh of June, we talked about, uh, the Kansas Safe and Secure Schools grants that are available. It's a Dollar Dollar Matching Grant, uh, where the state is looking to allocate dollars to districts across state of Kansas that have specific safe and secure schools needs. Um, and we went into a conversation with our local principals, and we had a good conversation. And, uh, we, we've done some tweaking, uh, to that, to, to help address some camera needs as well as some, uh, door sensor needs. Katie, what else is there to add to that?
That is the primary, I think there's a little, uh, basically at this point, we just are kinda divided about how much was access control, which is door locks and things to do with doors, and how much was, um, things like cameras. Um, so, but it'll be kind of more specific once we know how much, whether we receive the grant. Um, at this time around, I have more that is on the access control side.
And the benefit to this is it's allowing us to be somewhat aggressive in that, rather than map something out for just one year, we're able to look at a couple of years if we get access to this grant. So that's, uh, in total, we're, we're seeking forty thousand, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so basically, we took, when your capital, per capital outlay plan, we had twenty thousand for this year and twenty thousand for next year. So we approved that to ask for the matching grant. And we'll know in the middle of July how that turned out. You know, with the, the district has been, since I've been here for quite some, quite a few years now, it's been really consistent about, you know, setting aside some capital outlay money for these types of things. We did the secure entrances a few years ago. I had a installer out just this week, actually, to talk about some of the changes we're doing. And he mentioned that his ex-wife was moving to the district and he wanted to move his students here because of the schools he's worked with, he feels like it's one of the more secure ones. So we're partway there, you know. But anyway, so we have applied for that grant money and we'll know more in July.
It's a quick turnaround now, so.
Yeah, that's, I was surprised that we would know that as soon.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you for hustling to get it in.
So like what happened in Texas, it also comes down to training with staff again, that you can't get lax in this or you leave an opening. And so it comes down to training with staff. Don't block doors open, don't, don't. And there are reasons for that because what happened in Texas is someone had blocked a door open and the person used that to enter the building. So if they had other things, which I don't know how much they had for defenses, it was completely undone by somebody who stuck a rock in the door, so it would stay open and you didn't have to use a key to get in. So it's those kind of practices that have to be retrained to staff and say, here's what happens or can happen if we don't stick with, you've got to, you've got to let the door lock and you've got to remember to take your keys with you and you'll have to unlock it when you come back from, say, recess or that kind of thing because it makes you less hardened than anytime you do that. So it is practices and getting people to understand there's a reason why you don't do this or forget. So that, that's just, that's another piece of this, is that continuous training that has to happen.
Safety does have to override.
Anything else to add? Mr. Dodge, if you wouldn't mind, just stepping right back up. So this is, this is, I'm such a dork, but I'm like so excited about this and I'm really excited that Mr. Dodge was willing to present this portion of the agenda because it really has been a handoff. We finished and did what we needed to do. Mr. Dorothy and I met with Michael Kuntz after our meeting and you guys gave your feedback to give those tweaks. Then it was handed over to Mark and he's been able to work with that the first week of June, as he mentioned, you know, with his team and what will be in your team effective July first. So he's going to give the update on the strategic plan.
Have you all had a chance to look at it, to put your eyes on? One of the cool things about the strategic plan is that it's identified some best practices that go into just the annual processes that you use as a school district. So as you go through that, you'll see some annual items there. And the cool part about that is that'll just become how we operate. So initially, it'll be on the strategic plan, but as that becomes part of our culture, it's no longer strategic plan, it's how we do business. So some of the, as you see those annuals, that's what that's in reference to. Another item there that I wanted to highlight and point out was the development and implementing of additional ways to support and strengthen trusting relationships between students, staff, amongst students and among staff. The idea behind that kind of built, the conversation started with three different hashtags that were pre-populating that, so Baldwin Strong, Bullgrom Strong, and then Baldwin Built. And through the course of the conversation with the administrative team, we settled on Baldwin Built. I mean, that's, that's a brand that if you think about it, there are many stories that already exist with Baldwin Built, whether that's a student who graduates and goes off and finds success beyond high school, or if that's someone who's been through our school system and is able to come back and powerfully impact our community. That Baldwin Built, there is, it's a brand, if you, and so wanting to hold true to that. The other piece to that, part of that evaluation, is the development of channels of communication. And the idea behind this is it provides almost a workflow when someone has a question. And the idea behind this, you just want to start at the lowest possible level and then if you're not able to find your resolution, you have a next step. And that, once approved, then that gets published on a website, it's included in handbooks. It's, it's part of how we operate and do things so that not, so that you, an individual isn't going straight to the top. And you have that ability to build a relationship and solve an issue at the lowest possible level. And so that's one of the things that we'd like to work on. That's, we've been talking about that with the admin team, we felt that was a priority, that we'd like to make that something we operate and function with this school year. So that's, that's at the forefront of what we'd like to do. In the second, the second target area, a couple of highlights there, supporting the needs of students and staff, something that's, it's a need across the state and it's across the United States, actually. It's recruitment and retention of quality teachers. And we have two target timelines there. With the retention, that should be something that we do annually. We want to figure out what it is we're doing that makes people want to stay here and maybe what are some things that we may not be doing well that might plant that seed to try to make, go find, find success somewhere else so that we can shift that trajectory. And then in terms of recruitment, we want to try to develop a plan by next school year that's able to highlight market and target and bring that, that idea that Baldwin is the place to be. We, if we have had some, some good applicants to the various jobs that we've had so far, people want to be here, how can we maximize that? School-wide expectations with behavior supports, wanted to point that out, that's a good practice to go through to inspect what we expect, if you will. And so that's something that we want to make sure we do annually. Target area three, the engagement of schools and the community. There are two items there that are separated, but I wanted to kind of articulate the phase one and phase two, if you will, in terms of how they're connected. If you, the first item that I want to bring your attention to is developing additional ways to engage families in the community through comprehensive social media and text messaging. It's the development of a communication plan. If we're going to communicate with families, what mechanisms are we going to use and when are we going to use them so that families have an idea and understanding of the level of immediacy that a message might have is going to determine which mode it comes through. And then in phase two, by 2024 is where we develop and implement additional communications from schools and families and the communities about the various events behind that. So the idea is we want to get that initial layer put together first and then at the district level and then be able to operate that down then at the school level. Let's see, where am I at here? Am I in to target area four now? All right, this is the fun one. This is, this is, this is a good one. The first item there, I populated that with, and this, this is the work that we're doing with DLR in investigating what the possibilities could be. That's almost a dream big opportunity here. And so I've put that there in the timeline there, winter of twenty-two, because that's kind of the timeline that we've given with DLR. That's kind of our go time, where are we going with this? In talking with our directors, I visited with Nate, we're talking about the Safe and Secure Grant. This is something that should also be done annually. What grant all monies are out there and how can we leverage those and maximize what opportunities exist with that in mind? So I just wanted to point, point that out. That's something that we're doing, that should be an annual thing that we operate with. And then the last one I wanted to just mention there, it's the idea of a board tour. And just to kind of give some context to it, when you're doing a board tour, the idea behind it, is it to go through and search each and every penny of the building? It's those target areas, whether it's an area that we're seeking a bond issue for or if it's an area that you've invested dollars in from a capital perspective, what does that look like? How is it, how is it being utilized? Teacher's doing some great things, it's an opportunity for a school to show off and brag. Gives you an opportunity to go through the experiences that our kids have, eat breakfast, eat lunch. The idea behind it is you're spending about thirty minutes in a building and allowing the administration to showcase their building to you. And that would put you through a menu, you'd have a lunch. And then depending on how, how things operate, you could have a reflection session as board or it could give you an opportunity to shadow a couple of teachers to just see what's going on in the classrooms. It gives you an opportunity to embed yourselves in the school. The drawback to it is it is a day. It's, it's a big day, but it's well worth it. It gets you into the classrooms, it gets you into the buildings and it allows you to see with your own eyes, with kids in space, how the schools are operating and functioning and what the needs look like. So anyways, that's kind of a Cliff Notes, a highlight version of what's there. Do you have any questions with what you've seen or what you've heard?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I do want to thank the academic team as we worked and we had these discussions, it allowed us to really dive into what we've got going. So our building principals, Kay, Drew, we had a great conversation about everything that we've got laid out in this plan, so we're excited.
Thank you very much. All right, new business. So that segue is nicely into the bond exploration update. Mark and Nate and I met with DLR on the ninth of June and I just wanted to make sure and report back to you all so that you have a recap of what that process is going to entail. It was kind of a, let's get started to figure out how we're going to get started type meeting. And so an overview of the process, over the summer months, by about August, we will have spent, the, DLR will actually do our needs assessment. And so they're going to take care of that over the summer. That's their goal, is to determine that with their, their own facilities tour. From there, three committees will be established, the Community Visioning Committee, the Educator Student Group, and then the admin team. So there, you have these three separate committees that will essentially be operating independently for a while, managed by DLR, then they bring it all together in sort of this build-a-bond approach. So that process will essentially be September-ish into late fall with the goal of narrowing down through that process and then being able to bring to the board. That way, it really is coming from various stakeholders in the school and the community and it's not just, you know, bored down that it comes up. So they described that process in a little more detail and how that would work. Our strategic plan has already been shared with them, so we just kind of use that time to identify things, you know, from the strategic plan. They asked some questions about that, priorities and such, we identified those. And then the idea is in the December, they will bring all of that back to us when we hopefully, you know, choose something to be able to submit for a ballot by January. So that will be, again, here I am saying to you, an ambitious timeline, but they, you know, assured us that it was doable, they felt like we were well positioned because of the other work that we've done. And, you know, again, it is an opportunity. Certainly in that conversation, we acknowledged external circumstances such as inflation and other things that are going on economically that have shifted even since Dustin came and spoke with us, but, but even with those shifting dynamics, there's, there's still a lot of potential here. But Dustin will be very much involved with that process. They are asking that two board members, now these are committees that are going to be, three of them that are going to be, especially the two, the Community Visioning and the Educator Student Group, they said the average is kind of a meeting once every three weeks. And they, they are asking that a couple of board members are involved in all of that so that those two board members can then siphon back information to the board. So just so you know what that sort of looks like procedurally and that bond exploration update will be an agenda item on every agenda at this point forward because there will always be something to report back to the board as a whole. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Mark or Nate, am I missing any highlight things that you think are important to share? Okay, okay.
Do they want the same two board members to serve on all three of those committees?
Yeah.
Or two different out each?
Nope, they want the same two to ride herd through all of it. So think about that, don't have to make any decisions on that right now. Like I say, those are the kinds of thoughts and discussions, thinking about folks to ask, invite. That work will be happening over the summer to kind of be figuring out who those folks are, identifying and so that Augusty, Septembery, somewhere in there, that's kind of how she said it, but that's when we can really start to get going. Their communications plan, I felt was very good in terms, and they will mention several different ways to get data and also to communicate data to the community in an ongoing way through, you know, survey, quick little Survey Monkey types of things, Facebook Live, you know, named a number of things. They talked about that in here too, but Stephanie expanded upon that a little bit more in a way that I was frankly excited about. Because like anything, communication is always a challenge and we want to make sure people feel like they are a part of this and not in any way, there's no sneak attack here. We are pursuing an opportunity of a generation to pass a bond and not raise mills. There's no secret about that. And what can we do and what does that dollar amount look like and how can we best serve our district by what that could do? It's, it's very transparent. And, you know, we may do all that work at the end of it and the community may decide, no, we don't want to do that. But as board members, when we do have this opportunity to put together something without having to raise, it's, it's our due diligence to put it out there and to give folks that opportunity to have their say and to, and to sell the idea of why it's good and why it benefits our kids and why we need it. So yet another big project and I want to make sure you all were aware of that. That's all I have unless you have questions about that. Okay, board member input, co-op report.
Similar topic. The co-op has refined our strategic plan for the next five years as of last, well, last week, I guess it was. And I wanted to see if you guys had any questions or comments or thoughts on the particular items that were within that and that was sent out late last week for your review and pleasure, I suppose. Any questions, thoughts or questions or comments on it?
I just think it's really cool that we were, I mean, I feel bad for you because you were, you guys were double, double doing stuff, but I do think it's only going to benefit our students and families that we did this, that it happened to work out that these two strategic plans, processes were happening at the same time.
And there's a ton of overlap there, talking about, you know, the overall well-being of students, communication pieces. No one within the board of the co-op or the organization of the co-op ever remembers having a strategic plan from operating the co-op as an organization going back ten, twelve, fifteen years at this point. So it's sort of a new endeavor for our organization to have as kind of a timetable for where we're intending to go. And that gets me to my other big bullet point here, because we've already accomplished one thing on here. We have raised the para pay. It had been eleven dollars an hour for the starting wage, so graduating high school, really starting at the para level, it had been eleven. We've raised it all the way to twelve to be competitive with other entities in the area. Now, we're kind of unique in that we have, we reward experience within our paras as well, like even, you know, multiple years ago, so if you come in with an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree, you can, you can qualify for a higher rate of pay. So this should move our average pay rate for a para, you know, with that experience level and credentials, so to speak, to more in that fourteen to fifteen dollar an hour rate range. So we're much more competitive now that we've raised this. Fingers crossed this actually is effective enough to get, get all the other seats filled for all the, all the needs we have for those positions, they've been very hard to fill. But we hope this is a, is a, we're in our direction. This is feedback we got from all superintendents at the co-op that, that this is the number one priority for us to go forward with that. So we took liberties with that and went ahead and approved that as of last week. So other than that, Tony, other? All right. Questions, thoughts?
Thank you. Does anyone have any miscellaneous topics? All right, for the final time, Mr. Dorothy, superintendent's report.
I don't know that I have anything specific to add to this meeting, but I just, I just want to say the transition for myself and Mark has gone very well. Mark has tried to come in for a number of things as he could. He's still completing.
He's still completing well. I think maybe he's completed his contract now with Udora and is getting a chance to come down and spend some time in the district. But all along the way, on some hirings we've done, some decision-making, Mark has done a great job of coming down and sitting down, spending some time with me, other staff members, and, I'm gone. Yeah. But he. So I just wanted, part of my comments was, I just wanted to let the board know that Mark, I think, has done an outstanding job of trying to transition into the, into the position so that when he hits the ground, he's running on July 1st. And so, and we're going to talk tomorrow, probably at length, about some more things that he may be able to get done before he shows up that first day. So I think that transition is going well, and I hope that that serves the district well in the long run, is that he's able to get going that very first day on what that's going to be. So as I wrap up and he gets ready to take over, most certainly, the idea has been to make him as effective as he can possibly be from the very beginning. So I just wanted to let the board know that that's gone really well. So with that, I don't know that I have anything else other than what I've already reported to you through the meeting for this evening.
Any other, consider executive session matters? Does anyone have any, any executive session time you need that's additional to what we did before the meeting? Okay.
Kelly, can I ask you a bookkeeping? I probably just missed it. Did we need action on final bills and transfers? And did we take it?
We did.
We did vote? Yes.
Yes.
I spaced it.
No. Well, I counted you, so maybe I shouldn't.
Yeah, I'm sure I voted for it. I just forgot.
I thought I saw you raising your hand.
That's been the fly.
Yes. Because we also, we approved it with contingency use up to the cap of 100. Is that triggered?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
Got it.
Yep. Thank you for asking. Never be shy to ask because there's, it's a lot of, there's a lot of moving pieces. All right. So we have, we have a motion for, to accept our personnel report. If someone would like to make that. Tony has moved. Is there a second? Tony moved and Phil seconded to approve the personnel report as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries six zero. And then I will move that we extend Health, Dental, and Vision to Mr. Paul Dorothy for the 2223 school year.
Please.
I've moved Phil seconded. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. All right. I'm going to take a couple more liberties before I ask for a motion for adjournment. I'm so thankful for those who had the wisdom to hire Mr. Dorothy. And I know one of them is sitting at this table. And without going into a whole other long thing, I'm going to borrow some things that other people said. At the faculty breakfast, Mike Curran spoke. And, and to know Mike is to love Mike. He has a certain way about his, his public speaking that I'm, I find endearing. But he shoots it straight. And as he said, you know, when Mr. Dorothy came here, we were hundreds of thousands of dollars in the hole. Things were really jacked up. Things were not categorized in their rightful place. And you and I have talked philosophically, when we're not talking shop, you know, that, that small-town value of always trying to leave something better than you find it. You know, whether it's a ball field you leave and clean up the dugout when you leave, whatever the case may be. You turn in your uniform. And so with, with great gratitude, you have left it better than you found it. I, I will say that. And, and, and in your final years, helped to guide through pandemic. And, and we kept on doing business. We finished our accreditation process with very high marks. Clean and good, from our accounting standpoint, the highest possible commendation you can receive on that. While developing a new strategic plan, while being a gracious and willing leader to facilitate the transition that we hoped for by taking on hiring someone and the timeline that we did. All of those things don't happen if you don't have a person who is willing to take responsibility when things go wrong and willing to always give the credit when things go right. So with that, many thanks. Enjoy your family and your time. And with that, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
Motion, that would be adjourned.
Second.
Phil has moved and Chris has seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Meeting adjourned 8:24.